Um, invocation led by Pastor Joe.
Raise the living God. Can we all stand please? I like you guys new microphone. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, in the name of Jesus Christ, we just thank you, Heavenly Father, for this opportunity that we have here to gather, God, and to do your business. We just ask you, in the name of Jesus Christ, Heavenly Father, as we gather as a community, Heavenly Father, that we can do, Heavenly Father, everything in the your Spirit, the Holy Spirit. I ask you for direction, for wisdom, and God, I ask you, Heavenly Father, that this meeting go accordingly to your plans. In the name of Jesus Christ, we put everything in your hands, and we all say, amen. God bless you.
Can I leave you on your feet for just a moment, and let's do the pledge of allegiance? Ready, salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic of which we stand. One nation, under God, indivisible, indivisible, and just as it is in heaven.
Thank you. Thank you, Mike. Roll call, please.
Councilmember here.
Here.
Councilmember Franco.
Here.
Councilmember Marjorie.
Here.
Mayor Proton Robinson.
Here.
Mayor Oles.
Here. Okay, next item. Any council member has a potential conflict or interest, may identify the item and excuse themselves and discuss any voting on the matter. Anybody on this particular item here?
I will have to recuse myself, Mayor, from items... Two and three.
Two and three?
Yes, due to real property issues.
Okay, okay, noted for the record. Anybody else? Okay. All right, we'll move on to special presentation. Introduction to Public Works Employees. Shane?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Uh, I just want to take a few minutes of your time to introduce the newest members of the Public Works team. Uh, I started working for the city about fifteen years ago, and when I started, this was done, uh, the director at the time was Bob Weaver, and he took the time to do this with me and other employees, and I feel it's important, so I'm doing it with my guys and girls. Uh, bear with me, I'm nervous, I don't speak in front of people very often, so bear with me. Okay. First off, I'd like to introduce to you guys, uh, the new Public Works administrative assistant, which is Sylvia Luna. Uh, Sylvia was born and raised in Selma, graduated from Selma High, she's been married for twenty-one years and has four children. She would like to thank the city for this great opportunity.
Sylvia, congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Stay right here, don't move.
Welcome aboard, Sylvia.
Talk about that later. Okay, next up, the next victim is Danny Regatz. Danny is a married man, he has three children, he lives in Selma, and in his spare time, he likes to work on classic cars.
All right. Now we're going to find who to find mechanic.
Danny, welcome.
All right, good to see you. Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have Francisco, Francisco Canela. Francisco is thirty-one years old, he is married, has two children, Damien and Victoria. He left Mexico in two thousand and two and has lived in Dinuba since the age of fourteen. He's been working for the city for almost seven months and looks forward to being here many more years. He would also like to thank you guys for this opportunity.
Mr. Canela.
Next, we have our new fleet mechanic, Nestor Galvan. He is married and has four children, he's been a mechanic for eighteen years, he graduated from the Fresno City College with an ASN Automotive Technology. He is also happy to be part of the city of Selma.
Good seeing you again. Pleasure.
Welcome aboard, Nestor.
And last but not least, is Joseph Barella. Joseph is thirty-one years old, and he's been married to his lovely wife, Crystal. Thirty-six? Typo. Typo. Like I was saying, Joseph has been married to his lovely wife, Crystal, for six years. He's the father of three wonderful boys, ages seven, five, and three. Prior to working for the city of Selma, he was employed for thirteen years at Sun Maid Raisins. He's been a resident of Selma all his life, and last year became a city employee. Joseph has always loved his town and the community. Being able to work and serve the city of Selma has given him that much more love for it. He looks forward to working for and serving the city of Selma for many more years to come. Thank you guys very much.
Thank you very much. Okay, next item, we're going to have the, we're going to have the Boys and Girls Presentation. Mark?
Good morning, um, excuse me, good, good evening, Mayor and City Council Members. Um, tonight I come to you along with, um... She's a very young girl, she's five years old. Um, I met her when she was four and a half, she performed at our two-year anniversary. Some of you might have seen her at the farmer's market. Just recently, she performed at Roosevelt Elementary School with their after-school program. She recorded a video here in Selma at the Boys and Girls Club, and it's an anti-bullying song. So, um, not only October is heart health, um, it's also anti-bullying month. So, we're going to show the video right now, this was recorded here at the Boys and Girls Club.
Not my fault, don't act like you. Not my fault, don't look like you. Not my fault, not poppin' like you. Why don't you just let me be? Bully, can't you see? What you're doing to me? Bully, can't you see? That you're hurting me? Walking home, I can't do it right. Praying, I'm gonna get in the fight. I didn't do anything? That's the funny thing. You push me down, you bully me. Pull my hair, you spit on me. Bully, can't you see? What you're doing to me? You hurt me physically and mentally. This doesn't leave me so easily. Life is not the same? After what you did to me? Pain doesn't go away? Pain doesn't go away? Even after mama died, say? Everything's gonna be okay? Pain doesn't go away? Pain doesn't go away? Even after mama died, say? Everything's gonna be okay?
Say no to the bullying. We say no to the bullying. Just no to the bullying. Let them be right here. You could save a life, oh yeah. We don't need to fight, no. If we do the right, let them be right here.
I used to be a kid? And have so much fun? But every time I see you coming? I turn around and run. My heart beats so fast? My palms are so sweaty? I don't know what to do? I take my beating, I'm ready? People stop and stare? Start to record? But do they stop the bullying? From beating me more? No! Many unsavest people? Act like they care? But after they get attention? I'll see them anywhere! Kids hurt themselves? And even take their lives? Bullies looking to joke with? Then set up and fight? Pain doesn't go away? Pain doesn't go away? Even after mama died, say? Everything's gonna be okay? Pain doesn't go away? Pain doesn't go away? Even after mama died, say? Everything's gonna be okay?
Say no to the bullying. We say no to the bullying. Just no to the bullying.
Somebody help me!
Let them be right here. You could save a life, oh yeah. We don't need to fight, no. If we do the right, let them be right here.
So, as you can see, she, she speaks strong words. Bullying is, is a big problem. Happens at the Boys and Girls Club, happens at the schools. So, ladies and gentlemen, this is Princess Jessie James.
Mark, Mark, can you, uh, bring Jessie over here? We're gonna, guys, let's go down, and we're gonna give them a word. Jessie, let's go down and take them. Let me read the, yeah. Jessie, right here. Jessie, we're going to give you a proclamation here from the city of Selma. We, okay, this says, "We recognize the dedication of the Boys and Girls Club, your support in the youth of silly Selma. We appreciate your community, proud to effort to make a positive change." Jessie, in behalf of the city council, we give a certificate and a great honor.
Hello, you want to say something?
Who needs the Bradley Cooper and Lady Gaga movie when you have A Star is Born right there? She is so good.
I should be getting her, I should be getting her signature now before she gets too famous on me here.
It's coming, it's coming.
Any, any comments from you, council, on behalf?
Jessie, I have a quick question for you. What made you think of an anti-bullying song? Were you bullied yourself? Did you ever feel bullied?
Uh, well, we, we came up with the song, me and her, or I came up with the song, uh, because I have friends that live in LA. And, um, they were posting this, uh, oh, fuck. Yeah, the reason behind the song was, uh, I have friends in LA, and I was following them, and they're posting this story of some girl, you can see in the, the video.
Rosalie?
Avila, yeah, Rosalie Avila. She was thirteen years old, and she was getting bullied. And, uh, she hung herself, and they had to pull the plug on her because she was brain dead. But, uh, yeah, and she left a note from her parents, telling them sorry and stuff like that, but that's the reason behind the, the song. And it took me a while to come up with it because, you know, it was a touchy subject and...
Absolutely.
And then just one day, just boom, came out and just wrote it. So...
Are you her father?
Yes, sir, yeah.
What's your name?
Jessie, Jessie Hernandez, yeah. Twin. Yeah, she's, she's been performing since she was four years old. She's done shows with like E40, Snoop Dogg, and big people, she's a, she's auditioned for America Got Talent. Like I said, but we've been doing a lot of stuff with Selma and, uh, trying to, you know, do a lot of good stuff over here too, so... But, yeah, she's came a long way, but she's only been doing it for a year. And she's done over twenty, thirty, uh, shows, LA, Bakersfield, Roseville, Victorville. We just came back from LA, did two radio interviews over there. So, yeah, she's doing a lot of good things.
Wow.
We appreciate you guys. Any more ques- any more questions?
Thank you, that's a very powerful message you're making.
Yeah, we appreciate it, thank you guys.
And thank you for being a great part of our community, thank you. You make a big difference, trust me. Okay, we'll move on to the next item. Okay, next item, recognizing the youth program, the Devil Pups, we have somebody from the... No Colonel, he didn't show up, okay, we'll maybe come back to it. Okay, we'll move on to the next item, and, uh, Neighborhood Resource Center Presentation.
Good evening. First and foremost, I can't start, start without congratulating, congratulating you, Dad? Um, Dad?
Thank you.
And, um, because behind every absolutely amazing child, there has to be an absolutely amazing parent, an absolutely amazing either caregiver, grandpa, grandma, aunt, someone who loves, sees a child, respects them for who they are as little people. So, congratulations to you.
Yeah, I appreciate it, thank you.
Um, my name's Angelita, I am the Director of the Resource Centers for Comprehensive Youth Services, and it is an honor to be here today. I am actually, um, usually I'm a pretty good public speaker, but today I am overwhelmed by the emotion that I have in my heart, and actually my soul, by what I just saw of your daughter and her beautiful presentation. Um, our agency, I call it the mothership, it is out of Fresno, it is not, um, we are not locally, the big organization is not here in, in, um, Selma. But we really focus on mental, mental health, particularly children, um, different, uh... Child abuse really is our, our key, our prevention. Uh, Comprehensive Youth Services started with one resource center in Sanger. I was hired to basically look at it, reevaluate it, and figure out if it was something that was going to continue with the organization, or if it was going to die. We serviced, um, we did a couple focus groups, we reached out about six hundred people in the community of Sanger, and they decided that it was a great program and that they didn't know about it, so I came in to revamp it. Since then, that was seven years ago, since then, our agency has grown to four resource centers. Sanger, Selma, soon to be Ridley, and another one at, um, nine-three-seven-zero-five in Fresno. But today, I'm here to talk about the one in, um, in Selma. Our... First of all, I'd like to say that we started in July, July of this past year, we have been here now one full year. Uh, it was a rocky start, we kind of didn't have a home, and we were trying to work out of our cars and, and people's homes and in the park, but that's how we started, and it, it was quite, uh, difficult. But what I want to share with you is why we are here. The county, uh, did a different, um... They looked at where CPS reports are made, Child Protective Services reports are made, and they found that Selma is one of the highest communities where there are reports. And, um, and so that's why they chose to put out a bid for, for the Selma Resource Center, and our agency decided to apply as our sister organization was in Sanger, and we felt that both of us would be able to leverage supports and services for families as we already were aware of this, um, some of these areas around Selma and its surrounding communities. With that said, um, I want to share a couple things of what we do. So, we do an array of services, anywhere from support groups, parenting classes, anger management classes. We have all our teams, there's a team of eight there, they're all bilingual, uh, except for one, English, Spanish, and Punjabi. Um, and they are literate, bilingual, bicultural as well, and I want to share that because that's important. There's a difference between being, being able to translate and say the words that are in front of you because you can read them, and really understand culturally what people are going through, um, especially during hard times. We, um, this year, I'd like to share, and I'm really proud of this, that we have serviced eight hundred and fifty unduplicate people. The fiscal year of this, last year, eight hundred and fifty unduplicate people. That equates to seven hundred seventy-one families in the Selma area, a total of one thousand six hundred forty-five services. And those services, we don't count resource fairs or outreach opportunities, we really count direct service, whether it's case management, whether it's translation, court services, um, and whatnot. The Resource Center in Sanger, in Selma is very unique, as we receive referrals from CPS. I'm not sure if you're aware, but CPS has three different pathways, path one, two, and three. Path three are children that are basically removed from the whole, the home because of the severe abuse. Path twos are, um, there are CPS intervention that happens, um, may not necessarily take the children away from the home, and path one are those that there may have been abuse, but not enough for the penal code, so that, um, CPS becomes involved. We receive the path ones, those are the ones that there may be abuse, they may need support, um, and so, so those are the ones we get. This past year, we had two hundred and four of those referrals that we received within our agency. One of the unique things that I like to share about you, about that, and, um, our program, is that we're not allowed to tell families that they were referred to CPS. It's quite, uh, the easiest way to describe it is, are you aware of the Kirby vacuums? Where people would come knock on your door, and you didn't want them, but somehow you ended up buying them? So that's the easiest way that I, that I share with my staff. We're selling Kirby vacuums, there's these services that families need, they don't, they're not aware of it, but our job is to engage them in a way that's non-threatening, so that they receive the supports and, and, um, services they need. The reason why I acknowledge you, sir, is because children, all... If children have a loving adult in their life, if they live in a safe, stable home, all children would be this child. All we need, all children need is a person to really care about them, to be there for them, to, to love them for who they are, not for what they could be or what, not for the, not for anything other than who the, the little people are, right? And so, the reason why our, um, our team, I love our agency, I love our, our Resource Center, because that's our goal. Our goal is to, although we don't directly provide, uh, service supports as, um, the Boys and Girls Club or the schools to the children, we provide it to the parents, because we know that the stronger the parents are, the more supportive the parents are, the more, the more their children are going to thrive. If I am a mom, and if I'm in a domestic violent relationship, and I don't have the food to give my child, my child will suffer, right? If I don't know where to go for, for, um, for clothing, if I don't know where to go and seek help, if I'm trying to flee a violent relationship, or my neighbor's harassing me, or doing things that they're not supposed to in and around my community, my child will suffer. And so, the, the reason why we're here is to, to support family, to support children, supported by families, and empower and, and greater support community. Um, one of the things that I like to share about this Kirby thing that I keep on talking about, our, um, path ones, resource, uh, families, is that our engagement rate is anywhere between fifty-seven to seventy-four percent. That is really high for a differential response program. It is an honor, and they work relentless, they go above and beyond, go to the house, they do unannounced home visits, various times they call. Um, and one of the things that I like to share with you is that this coming year, in the next few weeks, we're going to start getting path two referrals. What that means is that children who the CPS has basically said, "Look, if we come again, your children are more likely to be removed from your home." This is where families are coming into our Resource Center. They're at the point where if, if we, if we as family advocates are not able to support them in the way that they can, and that they follow through, because it is about them and is empowerment, then the chances are that we're going to have more broken families. Will be, it's, it's, our, our job is direct, what we do is directly correlated to the success of the family. We have fun nights, we just, anywhere that we can, we work with a lot of people in the community, um, who have embraced us and who have taken us under their wing and have, um, introduced us to other absolutely amazing people. And so, in a nutshell, that's what we do. I, I apologize for not having a presentation, I've been a little tied up with just a bunch of other things, kind of trying to a little chicken without a head, if you could imagine, that's really my, my life. My personal and professional life, so I don't know, I'm alive today. Um, do you have any questions?
Yeah, let me ask you a question, when you, uh, when you go out for your program, when you go out and reach these people, how, how do you guys, uh... Are you contacted by CPS, or you, are you advocate, uh, on, uh, not door-to-door, how, how do you, how do you get your message out to these people that actually need the help?
So, um, for the, there's two different ways. One is, um, we go to resource fairs. When we started, we were actually going to all the markets to the different, um, housing apartments and just knocking on doors, saying, "Hi, here we are." Um, word of, besides word of mouth, also partners were referring people to us. Regarding the CPS program, we get a list, um, the contact information, the client and name and address, and then we go to their house. We do unannounced visits, but it's really difficult to do because they don't know why we're there, and they don't necessarily want us there. So, I knock at a door, and I say, "Hey, how are you?", you open your door, I see a dog, and we start talking about the dog. It's about personal relationships, and that's what makes our program successful, is the ability to connect with people beyond like, this is Angelita, I'm the provider, and you're the client. We really don't refer to our families as clients, we actually refer to them as family. The reason why I'm saying this is because my team knows that every single person that walks into the home, that could be their mom, that could be their dad, that when we make it personal, it's different. We don't act like we're, um, we treat people like how we would like to be treated, how the people that are most vulnerable in our families should be treated and receive the supports that they, they should get. So, it's really, the one thing we, if there's a flower, if it's a dead flower, like, "Oh, you know, what about this?", it, it's really about personal engagement. And it's, it's hard to quantify that. The personal relationship piece.
I, I really like your Kirby approach, simply because we all know that any type of abuse, child abuse, drug abuse, domestic abuse, um, thrives and flourishes when it's hidden and in the dark. And so, when you're a Kirby salesman and you knock on that door and they're forced to answer, you're shedding light possibly on a situation, and shedding that light is what, uh, brings them forward, right? And stops that cycle of shame and fear, and so, I really applaud that. Um, and so, I thank you for embracing the families of Selma, and, um, because, you know, our children are our future, but they're also our present, and so, we need to take care of them now. And, uh, so I appreciate all the work that you do on behalf of the families of Selma.
It is an honor, thank you.
Thank you.
So, you're the eyes and ears of CPS, pretty much?
Uh, yeah.
Sorta, and of families. The really, you know, one of the absolutely amazing things that I, um, that I appreciate and about the county is that we've had a really good relationship with CPS. We are beginning to start an interdependent relationship, where I could call supervisors and say, "Look, this is what's happening with the family." And, um, and as before, it kind of felt like CPS did the report, and then the family, then whatever happened with the family, because now we're able to work with the family in a different angle. Um, if the family has any feedback about the process that they had, or the, whatever, whatever happens, then we're able to relay it to, to the, to the actual supervisors. If there's a question or concern, we could just call them, and that's, that's quite fascinating, and especially when it comes to child abuse prevention. If I could call a person who has the power to X, Y, and Z, that's the family benefits the most.
You ever get hunches, you think this kid's being abused?
Yeah.
And you call CPS, or you call law enforcement, is that where you go with that?
Um, usually...
Or do you interview the, the child separately?
We don't, we don't, we cannot interview, we just, we just, uh, document what the, what we've observed, like physically observed, as well as what was said, but we can interview. Um, usually, when if it's with, it's, um, abuse, that, as, if it's not sexual, we could directly contact CPS and let them know, and we make, we follow through with the referral. If the child is not safe or it's some type of sexual abuse, we will both call law enforcement and CPS, and they will take it from there.
So, you're mandated reporter?
We, all of us are mandated reporters. And, um, that's one of, we will, the other thing with us is that whenever we do make a report, we will let the family know. Well, from the beginning, we're mandated reporters, and when they share something that we need to report, we will tell them that we report, and we will tell them what we're going to report, how we're going to report, and that we will walk with them through the whole process. Because if some, for example, a family comes in, a dad, and, uh, he's in a domestic violent relationship, he's trying to flee, and the children were, saw the, the abuse, then we have to report, and we will let him know that we're going to report. And, um, but we don't just make the report and let them fall through, through the cracks. We will, every single step, even with the intervention of CPS, we will be there for them.
And how many team members do you have with you?
Um, there are eight in Selma.
The other issue, when you, when you see that happening, how do you, how do you guys, uh, when you, I mean, I mean, domestic violence or any kind of crime, they're going to try to hide it whatever they can, but how do you, how do you, uh, when you identify it, okay, how do you reach out and try to facilitate help of that family, or the situation, I should say?
You know, um, going back to the, the personal relationship piece, it's, um... People know, when, when someone is in danger, or they are afraid, they see right through people who don't care, right through people who will treat them like numbers, or the checkmarks and the boxes. And the thing, the work that we do, and I do very, very hard, is team building amongst the team, and then having them work with families as if it is their own. I really, um, I'm sorry, I can't tell you, like, this is a thing we do, it's all about personal relationships. Because if someone trusts me as Angelita, they will share the things with me, and if they know that I'm not going to judge them, whatever, I, we don't judge parents. Some, we, no one has a child... Some, we, no one has a child and when they're pregnant or they're expecting, they're like, oh, I can't wait till I beat you or I can't wait till I abandon you or I can't, no one says that. Things happen and sometimes we just need that extra help and that's what my team is, we're that, we're person, no one's gonna love their children more than and we're the person there when they need us to be. And it's just, it's, it's getting to know, you know, señora rosa for señora rosa, not for client number one, two, three. I wish I could explain it better, but I really can't other than the personal connection with, that we have with people.
You've got him nodding over there, Mark Armento, the director of the Boys and Girls Club. Seems like you're a surrogate parent and he's a surrogate parent and Boys and Girls Club provides that.
Right, that's what makes the difference. If I know you care about me, I will do the things I need to do, but if you don't care, you're just another person, another line, another thing that I gotta do just to get out of, like, the radar.
No, it's all about caring, about caring about humanity itself. And with people, when people like you, who care about, of human race and how to fix it and how to make it go right. Cause those little people right there are the future of our society. And if we don't take care of our future of society, there is no future, you know?
You become the fiercest advocate.
Well, I will confess, the reason why I stand before you and I am passionate about the work is because it's not about until maybe like six months ago where I realized I grew up knowing, and it's this crazy thing where I grew up knowing and feeling that I was unlovable, that no one had the capacity to love me, but not because of their capacity, but my inability to be loved. And I realized that I grew up feeling that way. And because I grew up feeling that way, then I ended up, I'm a survivor of a domestic violent relationship, I'm a survivor of child abuse. And now, in the capacity that I have, I, I am proud of the work that I do and where I've come from despite all the difficult things I've gone through. But if I would have had a mom or a dad that cared half as much as he does for his daughter, I have no, there's, my mind can't even begin to comprehend where I'd be today. So, so it's here.
The good thing about you is, you survive and you're making it, you're trying to survive with the people that, to make them survivors. And you can see through that, you have that insight, cause you've been there, you know what it feels like, you know, you know? And you have that advantage that no one else has at this moment in life, you do. And you're blessed with that, you know? You are a survivor, you make a difference. You're make, and these people, any situation, you are making a difference, you are saving people lives.
Thank you.
You, we need people like you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to the...
Bless you.
On, Mr. Mayor, they're conveniently located right across the street from the police department.
Yeah. All right, well, we'll move on to the next item. Okay, this is oral communication. At this time, the mem, any member of the public can address the city council regarding items over the city council jurisdiction. No action will be discussed or taken on the agenda on the item. The issue will be referred to the city manager for review. Member of the public has a limit of three minutes to remark. You can come forward and state your name and...
Good evening again, Mayor, City Council members. Mark Armento, unit director, Boys and Girls Club. Just wanted to give you a brief overview of what's been going on at the club, exactly what's been taking place just this weekend. Let's start off with Saturday. Saturday, we went to the fairgrounds. First of all, I'd like to say thank you, Mayor, for the, for getting us the tickets. Mr. Moses Stites from Rural County Transit, if you can stand, sir. This is Mr. Moses Stites, he runs the Fresno County Rural Transit. He helped us get to the fairgrounds. I don't think Andrew's here, but Andrew Guzman of the Police Officers Association, Sal's Restaurant. So, with the, the day started off Saturday morning, I stopped at Sal's, picked up sixty burritos, kids had breakfast. From there, Mr. Moses Stites and his crew picked us up at the Salazar Center and we loaded two buses, thirty-six passengers each bus, and we went down to the Fresno Fairgrounds. I gave the kids and their chaperones a scavenger hunt to do. So, I took it from one end of the fairgrounds all the way up to the other end. They took numerous pictures, they got to take a picture with Mr. J, the mayor Jim Alvalos. And then, we got back, when we got back to the Salazar Center, Andrew and the Police Officers Association purchased pizza. So, sixty, excuse me, fifty members, ten chaperones, got a breakfast burrito, nice hot breakfast burrito in the morning, got to board the bus, go into the fairgrounds, have some fun, got on rides, played games. And we got back and had pizza. Without all those people being involved, that trip couldn't have, I know, I'm sorry, I always talk so much.
That's okay.
Without, without all those people, fifty children from, from the Vario or throughout Selma couldn't have even attended the fair. And the faces, it's, you know, where she at?
Angelita?
You're right, you, you make that connection and the children come to you and, and just to hear them and, you know, it's, it's fun, it's exciting. Let's see, Sunday, we, the leadership group, the Keystone Leadership, which is the older club members, we participated in the fundraiser yesterday that was held for Avery. There's a little girl that has a cancer, we participated in that. Also, Mike Kushner from Parks and Rec, they're gonna be changing out the water fountain at the Salazar Center. I call it the water, water fountain fifty thousand because it's a water fountain where you can put your water bottle and it's gonna be all filtered and stuff. We're getting ready for October twenty-fifth, I invite all of you and I invite the community to come out. We're having what they call lights on after school. We're doing open house tours of the Boys and Girls Club, it's gonna be from five to seven. We're gonna have other nonprofit agencies out there for information booths. The Samba Bandits Cheerleaders will be performing and along with Princess Jessie Jane, she'll be out there performing. But that's what I'd like to let you know and, you know, Angelita, I, I, you're doing a great job, okay? I don't live here in Selma, but these children are, are my home, so I have to give it to you, you're doing a great job, Angelita. But Mayor, City Council members, thank you.
Thank you, Mark, thank you. State your name and the address, please.
Yeah, my name is Colby Wells, I'm actually in Visalia, so I'm not from Selma. I'm the Public Affairs Manager for the Southern California Gas Company and I wanted to talk with you a little bit about gas issues and what's going on, so. As I'm sure you know, SoCal Gas distributes natural gas to Selma, allowing your residents to heat their homes, their water, cook meals, dry clothes economically and safely. And natural gas brings comfort and convenience to your residents. The employers of Selma also rely on natural gas to cook meals at restaurants, to heat their buildings and in many industrial processes here. Natural gas is affordable and abundant and the energy source of choice in homes and businesses for many of the purposes that I just stated. Natural gas is part of a balanced energy portfolio you and your constituents enjoy. I'm here tonight to raise your awareness of an ongoing issue in California, which many people are actually unaware of. California wants to upset this balanced energy portfolio, California wants to electrify everything. A proposal which did not pass the legislature this year would have required all new buildings built after twenty-twenty-two to be all-electric and would have required existing buildings to be retrofitted by, all-electric by twenty-thirty. So, while this proposal did not pass, you can be assured that similar proposals will be coming in the future. Think about how much you pay for electricity to cool your home in the summer and how relatively little you pay for natural gas to heat your home in the winter. Imagine paying those high electric bills year-round because you're forced to heat with electricity and cook with electricity and do everything you do now with natural gas with electricity. The proposals to force you to electrify your home are being made in the name of global warming, reducing greenhouse gas and carbon emissions and other environmental goals. These goals are laudable, but a cost-benefit analysis can't justify such drastic actions. And you and every homeowner and business owner in Selma are the ones who will pay. Let me be clear, SoCal Gas does not oppose electrification. If you want to use only electric appliances in your home, that's your choice. The fact is, virtually every home in Selma already has electricity and most also have natural gas with a few having propane. This is balance. Californians enjoy this balance, want this balance and expect this balance to continue. I'm alerting you today that this balance is threatened and with it, the economic stability of our families and businesses could be threatened too. Forcing homeowners to replace their natural gas appliances, furnace, stove, water heater, dryer and more is estimated to cost an average of seven thousand two hundred per homeowner. And the cost of electricity would be a statewide average, three hundred dollars and eighty-eight per year more than natural gas at today's rates. But we all know that the yearly cost for San Joaquin Valley communities would be a lot more due to our geography. There is an alternate, alternative to electrification for meeting the state's greenhouse goals and that's biogas or renewable natural gas, which comes from organic sources such as green waste, wastewater, food waste and ag waste. We can capture some of this gas now, which goes to atmosphere and then clean it and inject it into our pipelines. If just sixteen percent of the gas we deliver to customers comes from renewable sources, it will, excuse me, it will have the same effect on greenhouse gas emissions as electrifying all of California and at a significantly lower cost to everybody. And that is a realistic goal to achieve by twenty-thirty. With a balanced approach, we can achieve goals, preserve choice and minimize disruptions and cost. The point is, you shouldn't have to choose between what some decision makers in California believe is right for the environment and the reality of what families can afford. And with a balanced energy approach, you don't have to, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to the next item. Yes, you can, you can make a regular comment. State your name, your address. Is, is there an, is there an item on that agenda? Oh, no, we'll, we have to wait, you have to wait to item ten, sir, thank you. Things that don't appear, it's not on the agenda, okay? Thank you. Okay, anybody else? They're not, okay, when we want to the, all right, all right, we'll go to the consent counter, okay? All items in the consent counter are routine and all complete consent are motion by roll, one roll call by motion and all discussions by, by city council can be removed by, to the consent counter with part of the regular agenda and the rest can be ran for approval. Anybody wants to remove? I like to remove, actually, number F. Like remove number F for discussion.
I'd like to remove items E, G and I.
E, G and I? Okay, any, anybody else on the council?
I just wanted to remove I.
I, okay, all right, and so the remaining items for approval?
So moved.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mayor, Ms. Kim Robinson.
Hi.
Councilmember Dirk.
Hi.
Councilmember Franklin.
Hi.
Councilmember Montiel.
Hi.
Mayor Alvalos.
Hi, okay, I'm up here. Item, item F. Oh, I'm sorry, E, you're first, I'm sorry.
Okay, so the first one is, professional services agreement with Data Path Fresno LLC. I was looking at reviewing the contract, a hundred and twenty-nine thousand a year.
That's correct.
Is that competitive with other cities and their...
It's, yeah, we've actually had prices checked for different services and they're actually less, so they are within market. And basically what you're getting is you're getting two services. You have what, full-time tech in-house, that basically can take care of your day-to-day desktop issues, printers and things of that nature. So, it saves us from having to pay for labor and at a higher cost rate. And you also have your stronger, more robust service where you, they're managing our servers, they're securing our ITs and managing infrastructure as a whole.
So, I'm looking at a hundred and twenty-nine thousand total, couldn't we just hire somebody who could do all that?
You still have to outsource some of it. You, you could bring somebody in to do, manage some of the process, but a lot of the securities and things of that nature, you still have to bring somebody in.
Cause it looks like it's fifty-one, fifty a month for the actual person on site and then it's fifty-six, seventy-five a month for the remote support beyond. Is that about the percentage that the city needs, someone on site? This is eight, this is forty hours a week, this person's on site, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay, and then for remote support, does that include the hardware, the repairs?
They can remote in, they also have some individual coming in. As to reparations, they'll start remoting a lot more. We're allowed to call in for great tickets with unlimited access to be doing that. There's also different services such as security checks where they can remote in.
They encrypt, they, they encrypt things, code, they code, they do things that the city needs. They're right, little custom code, little software.
Correct, so for example, when we have our permanent updates, they can assist with that backend work to make sure it stabilizes and things of that nature.
Okay, and we have benchmarked the other cities and a hundred, a hundred and twenty-nine thousand is, is about, right?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, we need to, we'll, we'll go on to the next item. Yeah, I have that, okay, item F, Isaac on this veneer construction management company. Cost estimate for the fire station, number two. I thought we already have Precision Engineering on there as well, right?
This agreement is not for a construction manager, it's just for doing a cost estimate, we had to outsource to get that done. Precision is our construction manager. This is not a service they perform, I believe, though.
But on, now, I thought when we did the design on the, on the fire station, you know, designed, it was already a cost effective, already in the...
Those are rough estimates of what they, they thought it would project to be. You, in order to go to bond, you, you gotta go into a full, more in-depth analysis.
I mean... Yeah, I know a second opinion, but do we, do we actually need the...
Yes, we do.
Can we do, I'm gonna ask you, can we do it in-house as far as our, our...
No, it's not, it's not feasible. Let, let me give you a good example, let's say if you don't hire somebody such as veneer with the experience and the senior estimators will be able to come and do this process. Say they come in too low and we go out to bond for, let's say, for a rough number of four-point-five and we really come out to be about four million, so, or five million or something to that extent. So, you really need to be able to, to have a seasoned professional that can be able to come in and do this, this kind of work.
So, this is value engineering, pretty much?
That's what it is, correct.
And then when it goes out and the bid comes in, I, I guess, I would just follow up on the, on the mayor's comment. If it, you know, it, we, we don't actually, the city doesn't actually give a, a float a number to the contractors bidding on the job and if that doesn't happen, why not just take, you know, send out the specs? Maybe this does the specs as well, this does the exact plans here. But send it out, get the bids and then run it by the project manager, Precision Engineering. Are they not able to actually look at, is it outside their skill set to look at the bids and say, this is the right one or this is the best, this is the most qualified one?
Well, the reason you get a number prior to going out to bond is so you, you can actually make sure that you can afford the project, first of all. I mean, cause you, again, you don't wanna go out for a project where you're, you're estimating just as a preliminary four million, but realistically, you're looking at a project that's five. So, we have a cap in which we really wanna to understand what that costs because we're gonna go out for debt structure. So, there's gonna be a big difference for a debt structure that's about four million and really you're going out for five million. I mean, you're talking about thousands of dollars that we're gonna have to come up with. So, one, you come up with an estimate, you talk to your, your, your bond councils and things of that nature and say, okay, this is what the market's looking like. So, now we can develop a preliminary debt structure of what we can afford. So, that's, that's where all these numbers come into play. So, coming up with rough numbers is really not gonna get you where you need to be.
Now, the next question is, the veneer construction management company. I know there's other companies out there that can do this and probably a lot cheaper.
Correct, I don't know about a lot cheaper, what I can do is, the organizations that we're working with. The, the individuals we're working with, R and M, they're also well recommending this organization as well.
I mean...
They've worked up and down with them at the state.
But...
So, we're getting a lot of good rapport from these individuals outside of the organization and from our vendors.
It banners the company to use.
Correct.
They have the correct skill set in order to give us this value engineering.
That's correct.
And so, the value engineering is important to us because we need to know from the get-go whether or not we can, A, afford the project and B, when we go out to bond to our voters, that we have the correct and accurate information, not just a, an estimate.
That's correct, and then when you go out to bond as well, you're gonna be mentioning a number, say, our estimates are coming out to be four million. So, what, when they come back with five, then we can look... So what, when they come back with five, then we, we can look at that number and say, hey, what's going on?
It makes sense to me, cause if you have precision do it, um, this is not to, um, malign precision at all, but simply, that's the company who has the contract and if you have them value engineer it, um, who knows, it, it would be in their best interest to say that we can afford that. And so this is like a second set of eyes on these.
But didn't we have this, Vanir do both on the police station, do the value engineering and project management?
They are doing, yeah, that's correct.
I'm just, I guess I'm just seeing, uh, like another cooks stirring the broth there and I'm just thinking, why have, you know, two different entities doing the, doing the value engineering and then doing the project management? Like Vanir is doing both on the police station.
Well, I don't think precision is actually structured to be able to do something to this task. They can manage the project. They do have engineers, but I don't think they have chief, chief estimators.
Then how do they get the jobs, project manager on the fire station?
Their, their contract to manage the project itself, not to develop an, an estimate for the project.
They're gonna manage all the contractors on the job and make sure that the job comes in on time and under budget, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and then you said go out to the voters, this is not going out to the voters?
I'm sorry, no, you're, it's not going out to the voters. It's a, it's not a geo-bond, yeah. This is actually something, it's gonna be funded, measure us. I apologize.
Yeah, that, you know, that was, you know, a concern I have, Isaac, I mean, we, we had the same group with the police station, then we have these people here and I, you know, you know, I mean, I know it's a different issue with the police station as well, but, uh, same co- uh, uh, same company. That's one of the concern I have, you know, I want, I, I, I don't like to see many holdups, you know? And I like to move things.
R and M is the, R and M is the company that, who is R and M?
R and M's the individuals we, we first started this process with. And they're, they're the ones getting the architects in line and things of that nature. And they are recommending them as well, they worked well with them in the past.
Now, now, doesn't R and M do, um, construction as well?
I don't think they do this that best, I mean, I mean, they, we would be contracted with probably them as, or something else. But they did expect us to go out there and get this estimate done.
So R and M doesn't do any of this work themselves?
None to this depth, I don't believe so. Correct.
They do this work and they, um, they weren't able to give us a, an estimate of how much they thought it would come in at?
At the beginning, they gave us rough numbers of what they thought it would be. At this point, this is where you actually go into the full construction cost and go into a deeper dive of the full materials, the labor, everything.
What's the timeline on this, once this is awarded, this value engineering, how long does it take for them to come back with it? And then to go to bid and are they done, is Vanir done when they come back with the value engineering and precision?
That's correct, that, that's all their contract does is just the estimating.
Is there gonna be a pre-qualification, um, for the contractors like there was with the police?
That would be the construction manager that handles that, which would be precision. So that would be a task that they'd be asked to do. I mean, it's prepare that, those bidding documents.
And I know we mentioned this before, but there will be no project labor agreement, that'll be under consideration for the fire station.
We have not been approached by APLA at this point, no. Obviously, that would come to council as well, if, if that does come to fruition.
Well, that's, the, that's the only concern I have, Isaac, was, you know, the, the costs and the company, we have two companies. One, the I, you know, the police station and this, and, you know, I, I was a little bewildered a little bit, you know? I, I felt that, uh, one, we're not moving forward on the one, and I, I didn't wanna get caught in the same situation uh, on number one, that's number two, I didn't wanna do that. I want things to move very quickly, I mean, uh, especially the fire station right now and, uh, and the fire station. I want these things to move extremely well because, uh, uh, our econo- our economic growth is gonna grow fast and I, I, I know we need this very quickly. You know, uh,
Did R and, um, did R and, did they recommend precision?
Yeah.
Who recommended precision as the project manager?
I'm, I'm not aware of that, I don't know. I think they were one of the bidders that came out for the police station. Um, as far as the construction managers, so there was just another option.
Okay, so have they done, they've done fire stations before though?
Precision?
Has done construction management for fire stations?
I don't think they've done this type of project before.
Okay.
Don't quote me on that, I'd have to ask him again, I haven't talked to him for some time. Uh, the, the fire chief works with him at this point for this part of the project, we're in the preliminary phases.
Do you have experience with them, chief?
I, I do not, uh, I'm not positive if they have worked on a fire station project before. I can speak to, um, I can't speak to why they were chosen as the project manager that was done previously. However, I did talk to them about the preliminary cost estimate. Uh, they stated that they would do just what we did, that they would have to go out and look for somebody. Um, I coordinated back and forth with them, who we were speaking with Vanir. They concurred with, with using them and, uh, so we moved forward.
So the question I have is, you know, Vanir, that went to council, council voted on them as the project manager for the police station, the tune of like half a million dollars. Did we ever vote on precision? I, I don't recall voting on the project manager for the fire station and if not, why not?
No, not on precision, we didn't.
I remember they came, a, a firm came in second and I remember, was it Henry, it was city manager Perea who said that the company that had come in second was the candidate for the project manager, but I just don't remember it coming to a vote.
I can research for you then and get back to you.
Could you let us know? Ju- just so we can, just do our due diligence on, on that?
You know,
Yeah, and it, just so I can speak to Vanir, I mean, as far as this, this project goes, they understand that we're trying to speed this, we're on a timeline, on a table. Um, they're ready to go as soon as this is executed. They, they said it's gonna take no time at all for them to finish, finish it off. They've already seen the, what the, the documents look like, so they know they can move speedy on it. And I'd be happy to give council an update once it's done so that you can see how fast they move.
I'd like to know, and Mr. Council, I mean, just, you know, when we voted and what the vote was and?
For precision?
Yeah, for, for precision?
Yeah, I can get back to you on that.
I, I, no, really, that's a good point.
That's separate from this, correct, but I can definitely get back to you on that.
Alright, we'll go back to this.
You know, and if there were any other companies that were in the running for a project manager for the fire station? I guess I'm surprised Vanir wasn't approached. Do they do, would they do two at a time or is that exceeding their capacity?
Um, they do projects all over the state, so I'm sure they could.
Both the police station and the fire station? And could there have been some?
I can't speak to them, but I would assume so.
I'm just wondering if there could have been some price reduction as a result of doing two large projects for Selma as opposed to just one?
I think the thought process at the time was to, you didn't want the same, the same magnet group running two major projects because they thought if, if you ran into issues with resources on one, it would affect both projects. I think that was the reason for assigning different project magnets.
That could be a good reason, I just think, I'd like to hear it, hear a little more about the decision-making process.
Yeah, cause I, I don't remember.
And that does sound, uh, correct to me, that they were just separating tasks. One was a very smaller end project being the fire station remodel, um, so they chose that organization to be able to take that task on. Where Vanir's, uh, more comfortable taking on these larger projects and is structured for.
Do you know how much the project management cost is, the contract for the fire station?
It's, I wanna say close to two hundred thousand. It's less than, um, Vanir's, cause of the project size. But again, I can get you that information.
Yeah, I, yeah, I really have that information, uh, Isaac, for us, you know, all of us, you know, so, uh,
Okay, we should probably just move forward with this.
Okay, we'll move forward to one, F, uh, I'll make a motion? Alright.
I have G. I'm gonna bring up G next.
G, G next and we'll. Yeah, we'll do it.
We did E, I think we're on F now, right?
I made, I made a motion on F. No motion made on either, I'll make a motion. Okay, thank you, thank you.
I'll second it.
Okay, roll call.
Councilmember Montiel?
Hi.
Councilmember Franco?
Hi.
Councilmember Derrick?
Hi.
Councilmember Robertson?
Hi.
Mayor Alvin?
Hi, okay, move to item G.
Okay, item G, that is page?
Uh, seventy-nine.
Seventy-nine.
Page seventy-nine, thank you for that. So if you go to page seventy-nine, um, I don't have any problem, I'm gonna forward that one, that seems very reasonable. My question is, at the bottom, it says funding for this vehicle would come from the equipment replacement fund?
That's correct.
So it, I wasn't really that familiar with the equipment replacement fund when I saw that, so I went back to the last couple of budgets.
Yeah.
And as of May eighteen, two thousand seventeen, the fund balance was three hundred and twenty-seven thousand and sixty-nine dollars. As of May thirty-first, two, two thousand and eighteen, when we did the budget this year, that fund was five hundred and seventy-four thousand, nine hundred and fifty-four. And the projects listed under this sort of mysterious fund, at least to me, was replaced street sweeper slash donations. Now, I looked up, or I looked on the funding and the fund balance and now this fund balance is, tonight, is one million, one hundred and fifty-one thousand, seven hundred and twenty-four. So my question is, where did the additional five hundred and seventy-six thousand, seven hundred and seventy come from?
Good question. What, what those funds came from is actually the reimbursement from the insurance for the fire truck that got wrecked. So when we receive a reimbursement for a vehicle such as a wrecked vehicle, we actually take those funds that are received from the insurance and deposit them into this fund so that it doesn't affect the general fund's balance or we're not affecting budgets and things of that nature. And then when the expenditure comes back out, it comes into this one. So at the end of the fiscal year, you're looking at a high dollar amount, that's correct. But if you look further in the fis- of the current fiscal, you're gonna see that payment go out for the fire truck.
So we're gonna see, this time in the next budget, we're gonna see replaced street sweeper slash donation slash new fire truck?
Well, it was really just the holding place for the, for the hired fire truck to go out for us. It's not the funny mechanism? Correct.
To know where it was gonna be, so when you do actually,
Pay it out.
Buys the fire truck, now will the city buy the fire truck on a monthly installment basis like it's done in the past? Or will the city just pay?
The fire truck itself is already paying it off, uh, because of the insurance funds that we receive, it's paying itself off. There's gonna be a small difference, it's gonna be a brand-new one. The other one was totally, totally wrecked.
And that's the one they replaced.
So the insurance is actually covering it. Went out for the strike. That's correct.
Okay.
I mean, there's a small gap between, I think, the cost and the, and the overall, but not, yeah, so it's not completely covered. I mean, but they're actually, it's helping fund a brand-new vehicle itself, so.
So that's the equipment replacement fund, so what are the other five, if you don't mind my asking, my last question?
Sure.
Five seventy-four, nine fifty-four.
So what, the other funds that go into that, that are directly allocated, the only fund that gets in there directly allocated is gonna be your street sweeper, um, that's why you see the cost coming out of that account. So we receive sweeper, sweet sweeper fees through the tax roll, through, through the trash service itself. So what that fee does is allow us to pay the debt structure that we have on the street sweeper. And it also allows us to accumulate, so then we, when it is time to purchase a new one, we can make a deposit and keep rolling that vehicle through. So that's the, the constant ones going through there. Some other ones, again, the, this, this account will, will raise in flux because, for example, if we get a donation.
Type of account, right, they're a capital account?
Correct. So for example, if I get a donation from the healthcare district, uh, I have so many funds that I can pull from, right? But if I put it into the general, or I can't put it into a strictive fund, so I'll put it into the equipment replacement fund. Say it's ten thousand dollars, chief goes out and buys the equipment, it comes in, it comes out. So again, if I put it towards an account that's budgeted and I give a budget report and I say, look, you're, you're, you're over bal- it looks like we're over balanced, but necessarily we're not because the accounts were really not pertaining to what's really happening within the fund itself, it's more of an in and out.
So it's not unusual to have this pickup truck purchased out of that account?
Well, for this is a circon- is certain, a different circumstance, cause it's so high, so it makes the fund look high, but again, it goes right back out.
So let's say a truck, uh, gets a windstorm, gets totaled, you take that off the balance sheet and you put it in the, the replacement fund, is that right? The equipment replacement fund, what's the, what's the threshold for the value of the piece of equipment to go in the equipment relation?
There is no threshold.
What's your, what's your rule of thumb?
That, I, I mean, again, it's, the insurance amount that I get, whatever it is, that's just the amount that goes in there.
Is this just property or is this liability as well?
That's just the full amount, it's the, the property itself.
This isn't for casualty, this is just for property?
It's just every property itself, so we're replacing a vehicle.
Or is it capital too, if a building gets blown down, would you, would this, would that go in here?
No, if a building got blown down, you, you'd be looking at a capital improvement, a full project, because again, uh, that, that cost is so high. You really have to track, track that full build out. Correct.
Thank you, thank you for explaining it.
Okay.
I'd make a motion to approve item G.
Okay, alright, roll call please, right now?
Hi.
Hi.
Councilmember Franco?
Hi.
Councilmember Montiel?
Hi.
Mayor Alvin?
Hi, okay, next item. Item I.
Councilperson Montiel pulled it up first.
Robertson, could you go first?
Okay, um, if you, um, page eighty-five. Seven one four nine one CID drainage fee for a hundred and thirty. That is one big plumbing fee.
So as part of the CID litigation, um, there's multiple components, right? There's, um, a baseline fee, there's also some fees, or some revenues collected on the Cal Water Bill that has another fee in itself. So going through these agreements and me kinda doing my due diligence on this contract, getting the payments ready and things of that nature and also talking to Mr. Destof, um, it's come to light that there's an actual drainage fee that comes out. What it is, is you're being charged for the water that's being dumped, um, through city property into their, their ditches. So there's a, there's a rate that they use as far as acreage that gets drained and that's how they calculate this amount.
Okay, does this come from the storm drains that we're not allowed?
This comes from the general fund. Yeah, it comes from storm drains that are dumping into the ditches.
That are authorized by CID.
They are authorized, this is their fee for doing it, is what it is. So as we remove the acreages and we continue doing our storm drain projects as we've been doing, like the Valley View Basin and, and we connect those pipes, we, this, this fee will reduce.
So this fee is inversely proportional to the, um, infrastructure that we're gonna be putting in to take that water from the storm drains that we used to put in the CID canals and instead taking it to the recharge basin in Valley View?
That's correct. So as we pull off, it will. And actually, it's high because it's two years.
This is a two-year fee?
Mm-hmm.
Did they not, they didn't, they didn't notice it?
Yes.
A hundred and forty grand, so it's about seventy grand, uh, a month then, uh, seventy thousand a year?
It's seventy thousand a year, that's correct.
I've just never seen a drainage fee on here of seventy thousand, I, I've never seen it.
It's cause it's never been paid out, this is the first time. This is the first time we paid it out. That's why it's two years.
The agreement that the city came to, ending the lawsuit.
That's correct. It's part of that full agreement.
Got it, thanks.
So you've seen the other one come out for, um, the, the other calculation that's done, but you've never seen this piece of it.
Speaking of which, Isaac, what, what is that critical date? Is it twenty twenty to get us completely off and on our own conveyance?
I've discussed that with Mr. Destof, he says as long as we're working in good faith, he'll continue to work with us.
So he's,
There's no drop dead date that he's, that he stated to me.
Cause there used to be a final cutoff date, that they said that we had to. Yeah, twenty twenty, wasn't it, for that conveyance?
Yeah, and again, he says we're working in good faith, he knows, he understands the project we're working on. Uh, we were working very well with him together, uh, so, as long as we're working together, he's happy, yeah.
Yeah.
So he's not pushing us on anything, he understands we're working through projects and what these projects cost.
That's good.
So.
Cause we've always been in an adversarial relationship with them and so that's positive. I just had a quick question, more out of curiosity than anything on page eighty-six, that is if you're done?
Uh, go ahead, I'll come back.
No problem. It's on page eighty-six, seven one five four zero with a touchscreen time clock. Is that just an update or is that just, um, are you meshing that with your payroll system?
That's the payroll system we purchased, this is gonna be meshed with it.
That's what it is. And so will it be remotely accessible then or how, how is that gonna work?
It's gonna have multiple functions, so some individuals, our departments will have this type of time clock system. The other ones can actually log in right at their computer and do it. So depending on who the individual is, such, for example, city, city staff here, they have their own computers, they can come in and just log in real quick and just do it. Whereas, um, public works is really in and out, you just give them the access that, at this type of, um, device and allow them to move forward.
That sounds awesome. Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay.
If you work backwards, seven one five two seven PGNE looks high this month, what's the deal?
That is two items, again, we're paying for streets and utilities. Um, it's, it's actually down, if you look at the two, I looked at the prior month for just, so for all utilities, which is the buildings and things of that nature, you're, you're actually calculating at about twenty-eight thousand, some change. And the streets is eighteen, so the prior month, streets was eighteen as well.
Streetlights, right?
Mm-hmm, and then all utilities or other functions were like thirty-four, so it's actually decreased. It's a reduction, correct.
Thank you. And then, uh, seven one five one two, traffic engineering, traffic impact, is that the, is that Selma Grove project?
That is Selma Grove, that's the only project we have with him, yeah. That's actually been reimbursed, it should have been R on there, sorry.
Good deal. Okay, and then final, reimbursement for subrogation APD claim, is that just an insurance thing?
Yes.
That was the city, did the city? That was the city, did the city owe that as a result of liability?
I'm sorry, which check number is it?
I'm sorry, seven one four nine four. It's up towards the middle, it's two down from that drainage fee.
Subrogation?
Yeah, the RMA. Nine, nine, ninety four oh two eighty five.
I'll have to look into that one and get you back the information.
Thanks.
But it does.
Interesting to see if there's a, if there was liability to the city.
Yeah, I'll get back to that one.
Yeah, for the subrogation, for them to subrogate against us. And with that, I would make a, uh, a motion to approve item I.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mayor Protem Robertson.
Hi.
Councilmember Montijo.
Hi.
Councilmember Dirk.
Hi.
Councilmember Franco.
Hi.
Mayor Obolus.
Hi, okay. Next item, uh, public hearing. We got to it, guys.
Uh, mayor, this is where I have a real property interest, and so I'll be excusing myself.
Okay, oh, that's right, you're, you're excusing yourself under, uh, number three, am I three right?
And I believe item three is.
You said item three, I understand. Two and three, I understand.
Yes, that would be correct.
Okay.
So I'll be out.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Mayor, for purposes of the record, let the record reflect that Councilmember Montijo left the dais and left the room at seven twelve P M.
Okay, thank you. All right, uh, okay. Okay, item two, consideration resolution approving the applicants for the Community Development Block Grant Project Funding for fiscal two thousand nineteen and two thousand twenty, Isaac?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Um, what this is, is CB grant that we've been talking about in the past. We'll bring it to you so we can have a public hearing on it, uh, what we're calling the Neighborhood Sidewalk Community, or Connectivity Project. Again, what we're doing is looking at the neighborhoods, and you can see it within your packet, the neighbors that we're looking at, um, the Alphabet Streets, and then the, the streets by Washington School. And we're filling in the gaps. Uh, the areas that don't have sidewalk and putting some connectivity so that we can get some pedestrian travel. Is there any questions?
Yeah, okay, those areas that we're, we're targeting, uh, like maybe in the Salazar area, this.
That's correct.
There are areas in there that don't have any sidewalks.
That's correct.
Yeah. Okay, areas that actually are just dirt.
Yeah, we're not, we're not taking items in re- we're fixing some of the curbs, are the, I think the, the curbs. Um, but really what we're actually doing is taking the area, the, the places that don't have it at all.
Yeah, there's areas.
And doing that, that's what we're doing.
All right, okay, all right, then.
I think some of the ramps are being replaced too as well, but the ma- the majority of that's what it is.
Oh, okay. Okay, any questions, Council?
Is this, um, a multi-year project, like the last?
No, this is gonna be a one-year project, it'll be done in one fiscal year. Um, again, we're gonna wait for the pavement management plan that we discussed, and then we'll, we'll come back and do some more forecasting.
So have we had an update on that pavement management plan that Dan Bond discussed with Council at the?
That hasn't come back up yet at this moment, they're still waiting for it.
That's a massive county-wide project.
Collective, so it'll take some time, but yeah.
After they do their study, Dan will come back to the Council.
I could have him come back and report on that. And then, even before, we could have him come back and give the information so you're aware of where our streets are at. I mean, cause again, this information's gonna, to come back to you, and so you can see what are our neighborhoods that need the most work. I mean, where are we in the dire need, where's our traffic going and all those things, that, all that's gonna take into account, yeah.
Does this include the, um, the design work as well?
Yes, that's everything. So the, the labor to get it all put in and the design.
Will this be a public works project?
Yes.
All of this?
Yes.
Will this include sidewalks that say have, um, are damaged or have
Cracks.
Dangerous cracks and lips, or have, um, tree trunks growing under them, because I, I get calls and all the time about.
This project is really just connectivity and replacing, or putting sidewalk where it really doesn't have it. So you can see that we're, we're taking a large project area, two large brokerage areas. So the, the amount of money that we have to go around is, is only gonna cover that.
Is there a fund for that?
The side.
Existing sidewalks that have tree roots?
We do have, uh, what we have is called a sidewalk replacement fund. Um, so if citizens want to repair their sidewalk because of the damages and things of nature, they can come and actually take out a loan from the city, and we can bill it back to them.
Yeah, but at, at what percent? Is it a, is there a percentage?
There's not a percentage, we charge a small admin fee, but other than that, you have a term of five years to pay it back, at a max amount of twenty five hundred.
Cause I was asked that same question too, and I go, well, let me find out here.
Yep.
Do it themselves, or do they have to have a licensed contractor?
It's my understanding that it has to be a licensed contractor, and I think it's because of the passion and wire right away, but I'll talk again to our inspectors and engineers to get the clarity on that. I did ask them once.
Matching, or is it, uh, is it straight money?
Straight money, yeah.
Oh, that's a good.
So usually what happens is the project's actually gonna cost a little bit more, and they're gonna be asked to cover that, so.
Okay. Uh, any more questions from?
Not from us.
All right, uh, this, this may, public hearing, anybody from the public wanna make a comment on this issue, can come forward on this particular item. No? Okay, I'll refer it back to Council.
I'd make a motion to approve the application for the CBBG funding for fiscal year nineteen twenty.
Okay, well, coin toss here. Okay. All right, roll call, please.
Mayor Protem Robertson.
Hi.
Councilmember Dirk.
Hi.
Councilmember Franco.
Hi.
Mayor Obolus.
Hi. All right, next item, consider, number, item number three, consider resul- uh, resolution amending a memorandum understanding between the City of Selma, Public Works, and Transportation and Maintenance Employment period of July first, two thousand seventeen through, through July, June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen, uh, Moses. I mean, not Moses, but Isaac.
Isaac.
Sorry, sorry, I, you're up here now.
Thank you, Mayor, the Council. Um, if it's okay with you, I'd actually like to take items three and four together, since they do pertain to each other.
Oh, okay, okay, I'll go ahead and.
As one action item.
Okay, all right, well, I'll read the next item, item number four, okay. Considering, uh, considering amendment number one, a fleet, uh, fleet vehicle maintenance service agreement between the City of Fresno Ru- uh, Rural Transit Agency, and, okay.
Thank you. Um, what you have before you is agreement with, um, if you remember back on August twenty ninth, twenty eighteen, we executed an agreement with Fresno County Rural Transit Authority for their fleet vehicle maintenance services. Um, at this time, we're looking to do an amendment to the agreement itself by doing a reduction of the, one of the mechanics that was in the RFP and actually adding in a fleet vehicle maintenance, um, I'm sorry, it's actually a fleet service coordinator is what the actual title is. So to be able to do that, we have to actually amend our MOUs to take on the new salary scale and also the, the new position title and create that, that pay scale. Um, so it's been requested, it came from the Fresno County Rural Transit Authority. Is there any questions?
Yeah, okay, uh, Moses, can you, uh, ca- share some lightning on this, uh, particular item here, can you please? Since we, since you're here, from the.
Put him to work.
Honorable Mayor, uh, Councilmembers, essentially, we, uh, reevaluated our new service provider, which is MV Transportation, as well as our relocation to Selma. And, uh, everything has worked out very well, but in any move, uh, you basically have to assess what your needs are. And at the time that we put out the request for proposal, we anticipated that we would require three mechanics. And, uh, in retrospect, that was good at the time based on our existing service provider. But because of our efficiency factor and the, uh, cooperation we've received with the City of Selma Public Works, um, city manager, acting city manager, and, um, public works director, Shane, have been very accommodating. And through some efficiencies that we've implemented recently, uh, in our temporary facility, um, it's really not a requirement that we have three full-time mechanics, we really just need two. Uh, but we do need a fleet, uh, maintenance coordinator because of the reporting, the paperwork, uh, the CHP requirements under Motor Carrier Division, uh, the safety vehicle inspections. Um, the new drivers that are coming on board from this new company, MV Transportation, we basically have to bring them on board to our, uh, minimum responsibilities and also what the requirements are with the California Highway Patrol, even though they're a national company. Um, so, um, with that involvement and the necessary paperwork, yeah, it's more prudent for us to be in compliance, uh, with these requirements. And therefore, we would rather give up one maintenance, uh, position to get this fleet services coordinator because of the requirement for the paperwork. Essentially, if we don't get this paperwork done on time and completed, and the maintenance facility is not, um, inspected annually and passed, and basically what they do is satisfactory or unsatisfactory, it's pass or fail. Um, along with the, uh, intervals for the, uh, maintenance of the inspections of the vehicles. They come in at, um, three thousand miles, forty-five hundred miles, monthly, quarterly. So there's a lot of inspections and a lot of reporting, and all this has to be, um, inputted, computerized, as well as the maintenance forms that have to be delineated, uh, because as a public transit operator, we have to essentially report, uh, tires, batteries, and, uh, labor, um, that is at certain intervals and amounts. So it was really just a, an update and, um, a decision to uh, uh, out of necessity to really be in compliance. So, um, we worked with Isaac on that, and it was within the budget, and it's just a matter of a line item and a, um, um, position category change as well.
So it's a zero sum?
Yeah, yeah.
There, there's no overall difference in the budget amount?
You know, there, there's not, however, if there were, we would make a, uh, an adjustment in our budget to accommodate that, that change if it were a plus, an increase, um, and we would do that, um, out of necessity.
You, you know what I love seeing is, you know, the, the companies that are operating, you know, the Transit Now Authority, they're coming to Selma, they're renting buildings out from Selma landlords, they're putting money in the economy, they're having lunch here. People are coming here, hopefully they'll move here eventually. It's starting already to have a ripple effect to have the FCRTA maintenance facility here and to have that contract here for the, for the new, um, drivers. How's that coming along, Moses?
It's com- coming along very well. As a matter of fact, uh, you spoke to it locally, but I can tell you statewide, um, and probably nationally, I just returned from Lancaster, California, uh, this afternoon, went down there this morning to visit a factory where some of our buses are being built, and they're at the tail end of the line because there's about eighty to a hundred and twenty stages that they go through. And, uh, in talking to the company, I won't mention their name, but, um, they have two outlets. They have one in Los Angeles and one in San Francisco. So you guys can guess what I was pitching. I won't tell you the city, and I won't tell you the company, but you can pretty much guess, uh, where the next possible location could be. And the only reason I mention that is because about two weeks ago, um, we took the Air District on a tour. And the tour was, um, Fowler and Selma. And this tour included people from throughout the state of California, both California Air Resources Board and the San Joaquin Valley Air District. And unbeknownst to them, they were just inspired and awed by these, um, smaller rural communities compared to larger urbanized cities. And they were very impressed with your bus shelter out here, that's solar. They were impressed with your solar charging units and the, uh, new, um, property that we're in the process of, uh, trying to purchase, along with some other parcels. Um, and they were just, um, at awe as to the outreach in rural communities because a lot of the effort has always been in urbanized areas. And everything is, um, very different in the rural areas. Not that it's strange, but it's just different, and you have to apply different applications because of the distances. And, uh, we got overwhelming, uh, comments, and at the end of the day, um, several funding sources, the Air District and ARB basically said, well, let us know what kind of funding you're looking at, um, depending on your needs there at your new location, and what you're trying to do to all of the thirteen incorporated cities in Fresno County. So I think it was a good, um, demonstration. Plus, they got to ride in one of their forty-foot electric buses that they funded. So it was pretty much a show and tell, but it was a good opportunity to showcase what the Central Valley has to offer to a lot of other, um, agencies, uh, state and local agencies that aren't familiar with some of the, uh, rural communities such as Selma.
The person that was here earlier from SoCal Edison, talking about pumping the brakes on, uh, going to an electrified economy, now, the buses that you talked about right now, they are natural gas, is that right?
The, the, the current fleet that we have right now of a hundred, half, well, I'm sorry, forty-five percent are CNG, compressed natural gas, and the other forty-five percent are gasoline, and the other ten, eleven percent are electric.
Now, that fifty-five percent, will they need to be retooled here in the future to CNG?
Well.
By qualified maintenance, um, facilities?
Uh, the, it, it, not necessarily retooled, but we're gonna transition them into electric vehicles. Our mandate, really, without getting into any, um, uh, difference of opinion, is that we have a mandate that we have to be in compliance by twenty forty from the state of California ARB. It's, it's just, it's, it's a regulation. Uh, it's being discussed. Our efforts are trying to be in compliance by twenty twenty-five because with any deadline, if you try to make that compliance, you're usually behind. And again, we're the only public transit operator in the county that has started the conversion to electric vehicles. Um, and we're behind with only thirteen, uh, electric vehicles currently. Uh, City of Clovis, Fax, City of Fresno, they are not, um, in the electric vehicle business yet. They have some on order, but we're the only ones that have them on the road right now.
Will Selma be in a, in a good position to service those electric vehicles and their unique service needs? Because we have this FCRTA facility?
Uh, in ex- in an extremely great position because, um, the San Joaquin Valley Air District and ARB saw the location, and they saw what the possibilities are, uh, just for the mere fact that we've already, uh, taken on that challenge in, in trying to address the electric vehicle, uh, challenge that's being faced with everybody.
Sounds like they're encouraging you to buy, buy more land.
Yeah, can I say that?
Well, our, yeah, our biggest challenge is the utility companies and the grid and the rates, which that's gonna be a bigger issue than anything else that's before you. So we'll, we'll address that as it comes. Thank you.
Okay, um, Mo- Moses, uh, once again, that information you give us is, uh, very valuable, and it's always been, uh, it's always been a pleasure, when you, and you, I know you for a lot of years, and, uh, and you're, and you always come through. I gotta, I gotta hats off to you because of the relationship we have. You like Selma, I could tell.
Uh, you know, I, I feel like a resident, I spend quite a bit of time on Highway ninety-nine.
That's what I say, you like Selma, you're here.
As a matter of fact, I was talking to a company that, uh, builds electric, uh, monorail systems, uh, in Europe and, and Asia. And, uh, you never know what may come before you, so that's just a hint, but.
That's a hint?
But thanks to the police chief keeping me in line, um, I'll, I'll respond accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you, Moses, for the information. Okay. Yeah, uh, don't have to open it to the public?
It's not a public hearing.
Not a public hearing, it's not, but, okay, all right. Yeah, you know what? Anybody from the public wanna talk on this issue? And we'll refer it back to Council, okay? I guess not, we'll refer it back to Council. Okay, items, uh, three and four.
How about item number two first?
Oh, we, we did two already. Item three and four.
Okay, three and four. Can we do them together?
Yes.
That move that we, uh, that items three and four?
I'll second that.
Okay, roll call.
Councilmember Dirk.
Hi.
Council, Mayor Protem Robertson.
Hi.
Councilmember Franco.
Hi.
Mayor Obolus.
Hi, no brainer, hi on this one. Okay, item five. Oh, yeah, I gotta get that.
Wanna explain to our people why she's left?
Oh, yes.
You got a moment to do that?
Absolutely. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, occasionally, a council member may have a conflict of interest under the Fair Political Practices Commission. Uh, that commission has decided when a council member may have a conflict between their personal interests and their loyalty to the city. So in those situations, um, in this case, there was an issue where Councilmember Montijo owned real property within five hundred feet of the subject that we were talking about. Uh, the FPPC says that that is considered a conflict. Uh, the F P P C says that that is considered a conflict, and so, given the requirements of the F P P C, Councilmember Montiho refrained from voting on the matter. She also refrained from participating from, in the matter, and that's why she not only left the dais, but she left the rooms. There would be no appearance that she was trying to influence the decision in any way.
Great, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, thank you very much, wait for it to get. Thank you, Evette, we, uh, patients, thank you very much. Okay, item five. Uh, consider res- a resolution approving request a fee waiver for the Selma Rotary, uh, District Fifty-two Thirty Annual Band Festival Parade. Um, we have anybody?
Before we begin, I do wanna disclose to the public and to the Council that I am Rotary President, um, I did confer with Council. Council let me know that because it is not a paid position and there is no financial interest or anything like that, that I may stay at the dais.
Okay, thanks, alrighty. State your name, Shar, up with the record.
Shar Tucker, I'm here tonight representing Rotary, and we are asking once again this year for you to waive the fees. Uh, we feel that really this is a partnership event between the city and Rotary. We, um, bring thousands of people into our city every year to showcase our community. Um, participants eat at local restaurants, uh, stay at hotels, and shop, so we are asking you to waive the fees. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Not for me?
No.
Any questions? Not for me.
That move for approval that we waived the fees.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Alright, second. Alright, real call please.
Councilmember Dirk?
Aye.
Councilmember Franks?
Aye.
Councilmember Montiho?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Robertson?
Aye.
Mayor Albois?
Aye. Okay, next item. Okay, consider resolution approving request a fee waiver for the Christian Divine Church Annual Soup and Bread Festival. Uh, Marty, you're, you're up, buddy.
Mayor, Councilmembers, thank you for, uh, putting us on the agenda, we just asked for a, a waiver of that, of the fee, because we, we just have such a galvanized connection to our community with our church and, uh, with the band festival, we just signed on today with Chief, called me, and we're putting our train in the, in the event and to be part of it and all the things we do year-round, um, with, uh, with our church, with our building Broken Neighborhoods. And, uh, so we're, we're just very collectively together, and we do this event on the thirty-first, it's always the thirty-first, um, in order to, everything's, nothing is a fundraiser, everything is a hundred percent give back to our community. It has been a, an outreach of this church for, since two thousand and six in this, I mean, in this community, but, uh, since two thousand and twelve, and, uh, it has gotten quite big, and so we've always supported this right from the funds of our own, uh, congregation. Now we're starting to do a little bit of, uh, of, uh, bringing people on board to help in some of the, uh, the gifting and the things we give away, and from sleeping bags to things for winter time, and, uh, everything is a hundred percent free, um, from all the carnival to whatever we, we, we're, we, uh, do for, from the food, everything and stuff, so, and another part of it is that, um, it's our soup and bread festival, which is, uh, five hundred dollars for the best soup. So if you guys think you have that best soup, there's no cost to enter it, just bring it down, and, uh, um, and it's three hundred and fifty for second and a hundred and fifty for a third. And, uh, we do that because every one of our winners have come out of our neighborhood over there, and it's been a blessing from them every, every time, so it hasn't been somebody from some faraway place or something that's ever won, and the rest of it, we just give everything away, so we're asking for the same thing and, and, uh, if anybody here tonight is, uh, interested in, again, it's Christ-driven church right here across from our P G and E, uh, they're on Second and Sylvia, and we'd love to have any participation we can, and just to be part of our city and our community to, uh, give people an alternative place. If you're just kind of an understanding, takes over five thousand dollars in candy alone. So that's just in the candy, and that we give away, not because we give away a little, we fill the kids buckets up so they don't leave. Their parents stay there, eat soup, eat food, eat barbecue, and everything is donated from the church hub, and so we'd just like to see if the city would come behind us and, and help us in that area, uh, again this year. Any questions?
Any question? I go over here, guys, to get the candy. I'm confessing already, Marty.
Yes, we are, oh, yeah, thank you, Raina. We'd also like to invite the, uh, any of the, our city council members, um, we've never judged our soups from inside our church. They've always been, um, fair and, and, uh, so if any of our council members would like to be part of that, let me know. We'd like to, we have a new pastor in town at Valley Life, he is agreed to do, uh, be, him and his wife be a judge, which usually about six, seven of them. And they, it's pretty, pretty cool to go around and eat all the soups and taste them and, and then figure out which one you like the best, and, and then we pick a winner out of that. So if any of you would like to be judges this year, we'd love for you, um, all the other judges have been coming from churches from Kingsburg and different places and other cities and community. We'd like to see some of our Selma come to step up and maybe help out in that area, so it's.
Marty, I ready eat the soup, man. I don't wanna judge it, I ready eat it, uh.
Move to approve.
Move to approve, we need a second, okay, real call please.
Councilmember Montiho?
Aye.
Councilmember Franks?
Aye.
Councilmember Dirk?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Robertson?
Aye.
Mayor Albois?
Aye.
Thank you, guys.
You're welcome.
Please come out, thirty-first.
Thirty, oh, yeah, I'll be there with my bucket of candy.
It is.
Okay, next item, okay, item number s- uh, seven. Uh, considering a, a request for a fee waiver for Victoria Dugout, a community block yard sale. Anybody can hear from? I guess.
Wanna continue this till she can come out?
Yeah, we'll probably continue it till she come back, okay?
When is the yard sale?
It ha- it should act, the event actually happened this weekend, um, they have paid the fees already, so we can continue it if you'd like, or however you want it.
What were the fees, Isaac?
A hundred and thirty-five dollars.
And what was the purpose of?
Just, they had a, a block yard sale event, so they're doing some barricades, that's all they needed.
What I heard was they took the, the proceeds from the event and they used it to beautify their neighborhood.
Yeah, that's.
That was my understanding as well.
Yeah, that's correct.
Make their neighborhood look better, it's a great concept, we should, we should all be doing it, you know, where we have, uh, block sales, get to know our neighbors. Most of us know them already, but have a yard sale and then use those funds to, um, make repairs on our neighborhood. You know, seniors who can't make their own repairs, put it into that, go help them and, uh, pay for them with that.
Plant their flowers.
Really good idea.
So you'd like me to touch base with her and bring it back, is that the direction?
Not, do you have a consensus?
I'm sorry, yeah.
That's, that's my opinion, what, I think it's for a very good cause.
Oh, no, no, I, I, you know, I, I, you know, I, uh, I attended one of their meetings, and they wanna, they're, they wanna, they wanna beautify their block, and they wanna take, you're right, Scott, they wanna put the fees and.
Do they have a five oh one C three that we?
They don't, they don't have a five oh one C three.
Not established organization, um.
Bring it back.
Just bring it back.
Is that the consensus, then, bring it back?
Wait, okay, okay, I guess, you guys wanna bring it back?
Mike.
And do we have our guidelines yet? Uh, I think it would help us greatly if we have our guidelines for.
I can get this, I get that to you at the same meeting then.
I think, uh, I don't think we voted on that, I think that's gonna need to be an agenda item in the future.
Oh, no, it's gonna be, it will have to be an agenda item.
I think there are lots of different things that have to be decided on.
Yeah.
Fee waivers, whether they're five oh one C threes, you know, how often you can get a waiver, that kinda thing.
I think the last time we discussed was one time only.
Yeah, I did have a draft put together, I wasn't able to bring it back to Council.
I don't mind agendizing it, that's fine.
It, it, yeah, because it is a policy we're at the dock discussing, so.
Okay, we'll, we'll, we'll bring this item seven back, okay? Okay, alright, next item, number eight. Okay, well, uh. Yeah, you know what? Oh, ten minutes, okay, uh, we're gonna take a little break, about, uh, ten minutes here, and then we'll come back. Oh, three minutes, okay, three minutes, a three-minute break, guys.